Good morning. I call to order the August 4th, 2020, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. And beings, I see absolutely no one in the crowd, I think we'll go on to the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable in payroll, and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any items that wish to be amended or withdrawn by any commissioners? Hearing none, no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We will move to the action items. Item number one.
RFA number 194-20, acceptance of CDBG-CV grant funds. Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning Hannah.
Good morning Commissioners. This is a request for action to accept the funds that were granted to Celine County through the Community Development Block Grant for coronavirus response. If you remember, this is the grant that we actually applied for back in May, and at that point in time, the funding had been cut off, but we were very lucky and blessed that the state kept our application on file, and late in July, we received, or noticed that the state had received an additional $7 million, and our application was reconsidered and accepted. So, we are very happy to have received that information. The total grant amount that we received was $132,000, and at that point, so we will be utilizing this for grants or loans for nonprofit businesses in Celine County to help them with retention of employees. We will be working with the North Central Regional Planning Commission, they will help out with being the grant administrator, so this request not only is for the acceptance of the grant, but also the signing of the documentation for the North Central Planning Commission to be the grant administrator. As far as the budget impact piece of it, the administration costs for the planning commission is $12,000, and that will be taken from those grant dollars that we did receive. Other than that, we're very happy that we were able to receive this. As probably an important note, the city of Salina also received funds through the same Community Development Block Grant, so the funds that we will be using here in Celine County will be for those businesses that are outside the city limits of Salina. So, other than that, subject to any questions that you have, I'm just asking for acceptance of it.
Okay, I also noticed that it says that 51% of the jobs retained must be for persons in low to moderate income households, and I think that's very noteworthy, and I applaud that. Does that designation come from the state or from the county that be achieved?
So, there is, the application process for those is pretty extensive. Any of the businesses that are going to be applying for this particular grant are going to have to show the proof of that low to moderate income range. So, there's quite a bit of documentation that we're going to require from any type of business.
That's actually a federal requirement.
Well, I like it, you know, let's help those that need help, that's for sure. Any comments from Commissioners?
I have one question Hannah, the funds, are, they can be spent anywhere inside the county, including the city, or are those two separated, what the city got and what the county got, or is it just for businesses in the county?
Right, it'll just be for businesses in the county. We will not be able to spend this money on businesses in the city, that would go through their grand dollars that they received. So, we will specifically target those that are outside the city limits of Salina.
Thank you. Okay, I would ask for a public comment, but again, with no one to publicly comment, I will ask for a motion from the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the Community Development Block Grant Fund for Coronavirus Response as presented by staff.
Second the motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 194-20, acceptance of CDBG-CV grant funds. Further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries 4-0. We will move on to informational items. Item number one.
Planning and zoning update. Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. This is, this report is for the interval of January 1st to June, to July 30th, 2020. The accomplishments that we've had so far, the planning board has met three times this year, January, March, and last month, and they considered four conditional use permit applications and two transfer of development rights within this period of time. All approved, with the exception of one application that was withdrawn prior to, or after it was tabled. Staff is currently investigating all, an alternative location to hold the public hearings to avoid any kind of scheduling conflicts with other agencies utilizing Room 107. We did have one new member, Shawn Alvarez, that was welcomed onto the planning board in January of this year. Under building permits, you can see that we've been doing quite well under new residential. We have twice the number that we had last year at this time, we have eight last year, we had four about this time. And accessory structures as well are nearly, nearly double what we had last year. We have a total of 35 permits versus 22 last year at this time. The plans for this year, for the comprehensive plan and zoning code updates, due to the COVID-19 situation, staff has been, and staff working remotely for a period during the first quarter, the goals for the 2020 planning board have been delayed somewhat. However, staff intends to begin the process of the comprehensive plan update before the end of this year, and will concentrate on those aspects of the plan that do not require significant public participation. Budget update, revenue as of July 30th, it was $57,623.50. The 2019 revenue at the same date was $42,204.
Very good. Tim, I feel compelled to ask you, see, have you been here two years yet?
No. A year and a half.
Year and a half.
Uh huh.
In your side of it, how's it working out to be able to share with Celine County and Dickinson County, to share the same director? Is it flowing okay for you?
Going great. I have no, no issues.
Well, I certainly haven't heard of any issues or hiccups or anything, and I think it was a wise move for Celine County, a wise move for Dickinson County, and we appreciate your participation and your knowledge to come aboard and help us out, that's for sure.
You bet.
So, other comments from Commissioners?
One question, Tim, the revenue, the budget numbers, are those reflected in the cost of the permits?
Yeah.
What other things would, would impact your revenue?
Yeah, those, those are all permit, basically, those also include, those aren't just building permits, those are building permits plus, because my office is tied to the environmental services, those are also like septic permits and well permits and everything kind of collected together, and so as collectively, we've accrued $57,623.50 for the year so far with not, you know, that's building permits, septic, and well permits as well.
How deep are you going to dig into the comprehensive plan?
One of the things that I want to look at is, because, to be honest with you, in the years that this is, the last time that this was updated, which was like 10 years ago or so, it hasn't, I think the consensus of the planning commission has been that it's been, there hasn't been any real significant change in the county in terms of economics and that sort of thing, and so that's why I was going to start initially doing those updates that don't require a lot of public input, because we're at the point now, after seven years, you have to have some sort of public input, and as far as like what direction the county is going to go, and it's the general consensus from the planning board that there's, it hasn't really changed that significantly based on the goals that we've got outlined in our plan. So, what we'll probably do is start out with taking each chapter of that, of that, of the comprehensive plan, going through each of the goals and seeing which ones can be tweaked, which ones can be amended, and that sort of thing, and then those will all be open to the public, those will all be public hearings during the planning commission, scheduled planning commission meetings, where we start getting into like more detailed analysis where they'll say, well, we want this goal to be, we want more public input on like, say, this goal, then we would schedule something like a focus group hearing, focus group meetings, charrettes and that sort of thing to kind of bring different people together from the county that represent different areas, you know, and different aspects of the economy, to give us their input as to what, what to do. That won't be until all this COVID situation has been, you know, pretty much ironed out. I feel that we can get the majority of the goals that are listed in the comprehensive plan currently, we can get that done through the, just through the regular scheduled meetings of the planning board that we publish, you know, for public comment, and so that's, that's where we stand right now, and I think my first thing, my first goal would want, would be to want to, because this is also a census year, to try to get the, update our statistical information first, and go from there.
Best luck with it, and give our planning board a special thanks for tackling this.
Sure, you bet. They were kind of, they were a little reluctant at first, because I think the last time that they updated this, it was, it was quite arduous, but I think we've got it down to where we can make it, so it's not quite as cumbersome.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions from Commissioners? Hearing none. Tim, thank you very much, and again, welcome and to Celine County and helping us out, and we do appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item number two.
Road and Bridge, Road Plan Phase 1, Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning Commissioners. Well, I'm here this morning to further our discussion on our gravel road upgrade program. So, this morning, I've provided each of you a three-ring binder. This binder contains information regarding the Special Road Construction One Mill Fund, as well as other information to help in our, in our discussion. The intent of the informational briefing this morning is, is not to really dig into the gravel road upgrade, our gravel road upgrade program, but to just go through the binder, and I'll kind of explain the contents of the binder, what it is, and so you, you can take your time then over the next couple of weeks to kind of evaluate what's in there and come up with your own questions. So, we might as well just get started. If you could grab your three-ring binder, and I'll make this very, very quick, because I know you've got a busy, busy agenda this morning. So, if you would turn, I did include a piece of paper on the very front, in case you've got questions, you can write your questions down there, and then, you know, we can try to answer those later, but if you grab the first tab, it's called the One Mill and Safety Fund History, that's just a tabular form, as well as a map of the projects that's been completed with those two funds. Next is the Design Standards tab, and what I did is I put in there our current design standards. We've got different standards for our bituminous roads, and those are our asphalt roads, our gravel roads, and then our earth roads, all have different design standards, and so I put those in behind this tab. And then at the very end of this tab, there should be a couple 11 by 17 sheets, and this is what KDOT Bureau of Local Project uses for their design standards. And then the reason why I put those in is after evaluating several counties, more developed counties, that have design standards, the largest majority of them reference the KDOT standards, and don't recreate the wheel trying to create their own design standards, and so I thought this would be a good idea to put, put these standards in here to discuss as we move forward. The next tab is the Rural Primary Road System, and this is the, the current system, you know, that we have. So, the first is 11 by 17 of the resolution, and then behind that, you have the map. That was created in 2008. The next tab, let me know if I'm going too quick, and just, I need to slow down a little bit. The next tab is Road Classifications, and myself and the Darren, the Road Administrator, we kind of sat down and tried to come up with a new classification for our roads, and really, the, the main differences are gravel roads, and so what I tried to do in this section of the binder is to try to give some explanation, really tying down, you know, this first one here, bituminous asphalt road, you know, what do we, what do we have and want to try to accomplish with an asphalt road, and so I tried to spell that out. So, the first sheet there is just to give some characteristics in bullet form, then I tried to give a cross-section of what that road's going to look like after that, and then after the cross-sections, I provided a picture of, of what the road is, and so if you get past the asphalt road into the gravel road section, you'll see gravel road class one. What we did is we split the gravel roads into two categories. We've got a class one, which is a load-bearing gravel road, and that's more load-bearing in wet conditions, and then we've got a gravel road class two, which is a non-load-bearing road in wet conditions. And so, I tried to do the same thing, some characteristics in bullet form, cross-section, and then picture, a picture, kind of a typical picture of each classification. And then so you go through the gravel road, and then the last category is earth roads, and I tried to do the same thing there, so, you know, and the, and the goal of that is just to try to wrap our heads around, you know, what all roads we have. You know, in between the class two and class one, you know, there's, there's varying degrees of in-between a load-bearing and a non-load-bearing, you know, so, but we got to draw the line in the sand to kind of start talking about what, where we want to go. The next tab is maps, and so the first map, very colorful map, is, you know, trying to define what roads we currently have, you know, so the interstate and state system, you know, that's very easy to define, the asphalt roads, that's very easy to define, and then it just gets into the class one and class two gravel roads, and so this tried to represent what we currently have out there, to start, to start talking about this. And then the next map behind that, all I've done is the exact same map, but I overlaid our existing rural primary roads in the dark gray, so you can see what our current primary road roadmap is with what type of road we actually have on, on those routes. And then the final map in here is, and the text is kind of small, and it's, it's a little busy, and I apologize for that, but it is just a map of our right-ofways, and so we redid our right-ofway map, because the, the width of the existing right-ofway is very important on no one, because there's, you know, those roads where we're only 40 feet of right-ofway, we can only do so much in that, in that amount of space, you know, and so it was, it was important to, to acknowledge and to look into the amount of room we have if we're trying to upgrade certain roads. So, those are the three maps that I, I threw in this binder. The next tab is the Road Upgrade Program, so, and this is the tab where, you know, that this is the, what we're going to be trying to work on and define, but what I did behind this tab here is to put in what has been presented in the past. Okay, so, so we've got a starting point. These are the projects that were, were thrown out, oh, I apologize, I can't, I don't remember a date that these were, but these were put out, and some of these projects have been completed, but the majority of them have not, and so I think this is a good starting point to kind of look at what we want to do moving forward, as well as, as the map at the very end there, that kind of shows the exact same thing. And then the tab after that is the Road Upgrade Process, and so I threw that in there, you know, and this is the procedures that are to be followed when a, when the public requests a road to be upgraded, and so I wanted to throw that in there. So, that's, that's the contents of the binder.
Well, thank you, Justin. This looks pretty straightforward to me. I guess we want to reiterate and, and acknowledge that August 18th, that's two weeks away, that we'll be meeting at the Road and Bridge Department.
Yes.
Meeting room to, and I assume that will be an open meeting, I mean, we'll have to be under the coma rules, and so if residents wish to participate or listen to what's going on, but I certainly, there's not too much reading here, I don't think that, I encourage my fellow Commissioners to study this thing and get your questions in line, rather than fly by the seat of our pants, page to page, so, take a look at it, it looks pretty straightforward to me, so. Any other comments from Commissioners at this time?
I might have lost, lost it in the presentation, but you showed us the past list of projects?
Yes, and that's, yeah, if you go to the second tab to the end, it's called the Road Upgrade Program.
Did you also mention an updated one that you had put together?
No, no, not yet, not yet, you know, that's, that's something that I, you know, a little bit further down the line to get, you know, the Commissioners' input on, on where we want to go in the future with our recommendation, and so this is the, the part of the binder that is, is we're really going to work on, you know, this, that's the goal, and that tab is the goal where we're trying to be, is, is future projects.
Well, it looks very well put together for me, Justin, and I thank you very much, and, you know, it's on us to get our questions in line, and hopefully we can put together a good plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item number three.
Financial projection, jail sales tax.
And Mr. Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator. So, back in April of this year, your commission voted to put an item on the November ballot this year, to ask voters to approve a sales tax that would fund construction of a jail through issuance of bonds. So, we have engaged a couple of professionals, as you know, in that effort, so I'd like to reintroduce David Artaberry with Stiefel Nicholas and Company. Dave has put together the spreadsheet that is on the projection behind me, and also included in Commissioners' packets, that attempts to figure out how long we would need to issue bonds based on where we are with sales tax in the county, and the reason that it has been a couple of months since we have been in front of the commission with this conversation is COVID-19, and so.
Surely not.
The, the sales tax was expected to take a hit due to the stay-at-home orders. Luckily, as reported in the mid-year financials a couple of weeks ago, we haven't really seen that come to fruition, but Dave has projected an erosion, and And that's based on the, what we saw in the last recession. And so I'll turn it over to Dave and let him kind of go through the numbers and ask any questions for commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Artaberry.
Good morning, morning. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning and talk to you a little bit about the, the sales tax and the cash flow. Is it okay if I take my mask off when I'm presenting? I appreciate, I'm very much an advocate of wearing masks. Unfortunately, when I'm speaking, my glasses tend to fog up, so.
Likewise. Well, my voice is muffled.
My glasses are fogged up. It makes it a little difficult. The spreadsheet that you see here, as Phil was mentioning, what it attempts to do is to illustrate the cash flow that would be coming from the sales tax and be used to pay off the bonds. The ultimate goal of this is to look to see how long it's anticipated that these bonds would have to be outstanding because once the bonds are paid off, that's when the sales tax can be canceled. So, so when you look at this spreadsheet here, what you see on the left-hand side in the green box is what we anticipate the sales tax collections for the county will look like. Now, as was mentioned by Phil, we do, we did want to work into these projections, some kind of acknowledgement that sales tax could be lower because of the COVID situation. And so what we assumed here was that in 2021, your sales tax would be 10% lower than it was in 2019. And the reason we came up with that 10% figure is we went back and we looked at how the sales tax was impacted during the Great Recession back in 2009 and 10. And what we noticed was that the most the sales tax ever dropped during that, from one year to the next during that period of time, I should say, I'm sorry, from the peak to the lowest was about 10%. So we assumed the same situation here. Now, I don't know if that's going to come about, if it will be not as big of an impact or, or more of an impact, but that, that was the assumption we used just based off of, you know, the, the only history we really had. So in 2021, sales taxes are 10% lower than they were in 2019. Now, you'll see that that number at the top of that green column is only $3.3 million. Sales tax collections in 2019 were more like about $6.2 million. The reason it's so much less isn't just the impact of the COVID, but it's also the fact that that sales tax is only going to be collected in 2021 for probably about seven months out of the year. That's if it's approved, if the tax is approved in, in November and the tax is implemented on April 1, you'll get about seven months worth of collections. So, so that's kind of why in those first years, you'll see the sales tax a little bit lower. But then after that, we've assumed that the sales tax would grow at about 1% a year, which I think is historically a pretty conservative number. So that's the, the sales tax collections and a little bit of an explanation of the assumptions we used. Over there then in the middle, where it says 2021 bond debt service, this is just what we estimate the bond payments would look like on a $89.65 million bond issue. And we've spread these payments out over 22 years. Next to that, that sort of red pinkish box in the middle, you'll see a coverage ratio. And this is important. This represents the amount at which your sales tax collections exceed your annual bond payments. And this is your margin of safety. This is, you don't want to schedule your bond payments to be exactly equal to the sales tax because if the sales tax comes in under budget, then you have a shortfall. So this coverage ratio is important, not just for the county's cash flow and financial safety, but investors who are buying the bonds also like to see that the anticipated sales tax is, is well above what the, the bond payment is. So each year then, that, that, that coverage ratio, that, that surplus accumulates. And you can see then in those columns on the right, we call it the sales tax surplus fund. This is how the sales tax, the surplus each year would accumulate and grow over time. It would even earn some interest. The critical thing then becomes at what point in time does that cumulative surplus equal or exceed the amount of bonds that are outstanding? And the amount, the, the balance of the bonds that are outstanding show up in that column called, called bond balance. And what you see then, as you kind of look down there, is that in year 2000, or in year 18, the surplus sales tax that's in this fund, this designated fund, will exceed the amount of bonds outstanding. At that time, you can then pay off the entire old bond issue and cancel the sales tax. So even though this is a 22-year bond issue, the, the sales tax, based on these assumptions, would only need to run for about 18 years. And, and the way we did this payoff calculation is actually pretty conservative. The reality is, once that surplus starts to accumulate and once the bonds become callable probably in about eight to 10 years, you can start using that surplus each year to pay off a little bit of the outstanding issue. So really, I think it's more realistic that the bond issue would probably get paid off in about 16 or 17 years rather than 18. But this is just sort of a conservative approach to, to running the numbers. So obviously, welcome any questions that you might have about the cash flow, the assumptions we used. And, and, you know, that is, does, assumptions are a large part of, you know, the way the numbers work. It's been our experience that when we've run these sorts of calculations on other projects, ultimately what ends up happening is that the sales tax grows a little bit faster than expected. And the bond payments, interest rates, I've been conservative using a high rate here. Interest rate will probably be less. And the sales tax ultimately usually does get paid off quicker than, than what we originally project because of that.
I don't have any questions. I, I do want to comment that I really appreciate the fact that you've been very, very conservative here. I can see that in the numbers in itself. And if, I mean, let's just assume that all of a sudden in four or five years down the road, or three, or whatever, the economy just really takes off and we really start being more aggressive with our collections. Is it conceivable that it could be even a 15-year payoff or something like that?
Yeah, I think that's very realistic.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I'm, I'm hanging my hat on and the fact that we're not trying to sell a product that, you know, with that real aggressive, that boy, if we can collect all this tax, we'll get it paid off. Well, we're using very conservative numbers, or you are, and, and realistic to something that we can really go for. So that's, that's my comment. So other questions or comments from commissioners?
Great chart.
I'm going to try to keep my fingers on this and not lose it because obviously coming up in the next, what, 90 days, that we're going to have a real sales job on our hand. And I know that there's a lot of interest in the community on the jail project on both sides, you know, whether we need it and we don't need it or we do need it. And so these are, these are important numbers and, and facts that we need to, for our sales pitch and to let those understand on both sides that this is how it's going to work. So thank you very much. And I have a great deal of confidence in you and your firm, having sat on the, at the airport authority and being our liaisons on there. And I watched the city meetings that you have participated in and I've, I've got a great deal of confidence in you and your firm.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, okay. Thanks so much and thanks for taking the time. And you live in Kansas City, I think, don't you?
Yep, I do, yeah.
Thank you for coming out and taking the time to come out and explain this to us.
No, this is obviously an important and big project for the county, so.
Very much so.
I want to make sure these good issues get addressed and questions get answered.
And, and I'm quite certain that we'll be having you back, you know, at some point in time.
So staff is not asking for any action today. This is just informational. But the other person who's here today is Mitch Walter with our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell. And Mitch will be back with us two weeks from today, at which time we will be asking for action from the commission. And that will be the action of actually adopting the language to go on the ballot and transmit to the clerk for the November election. So that is the anticipated schedule.
All right. Good morning, Mitch, and we look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks and helping us out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right. What did I do on my sheet? We'll move to item number four.
County administrators' update.
Phil?
Good morning again, commissioners. So just a couple items for today. First, an update on the coronavirus funding advisory committee. Last Friday at 5:00 PM was the deadline for applications for direct aid plan. And we ended up with a total of 106 applications that were received. Total amount just in excess of $16.6 million in requested funding. As a reminder, we have $11,026,434 to spend in the community. The advisory committee met yesterday, received public comment, and started working through. We got through the first eight applications out of those 106. So we have scheduled meetings again tomorrow and on Friday, hoping to wrap up on next Monday and have an agenda item on your agenda for Tuesday for you to approve the recommendations of the committee and authorize staff to transmit that to the state. So appreciate the work of the committee and the folks who made public comment, as well as, of course, all of those who applied. The other item today, the, we are in bargaining with employee bargaining groups. And as has been mentioned, the bargaining groups wanted to have a conversation with the commission. And so Marilyn Lemer from Human Resources got back with them last week and they said, "Well, we understand we could show up on a Tuesday morning, but would the commission be willing to do a special meeting?" And so they finally threw out some dates. And so I just want to see your willingness to schedule something in addition to the Tuesday meeting, or if you want them to, to come to a Tuesday meeting. The date that they proposed would be tomorrow evening at 5:15, if that.
Excuse me, the date was what?
Tomorrow evening at 5:15.
Well, that's not going to work for me.
Okay. If the commission is willing to, to do something, I could certainly work with Linda and see if we can coordinate something. Or the other, you know, thing would just be to say, "Hey, we would prefer that you guys come to a Tuesday meeting."
I mean, the date that doesn't work for me, I mean, that doesn't mean the others can't participate or wouldn't want to do so, but I, I, I don't understand why they can't come to our, our regular meeting and discuss this with us, the same as any other entity would have to do. So, but I'm just one.
I would prefer they'd come, come to one of our public meetings. So everybody's on the same page and everybody knows what's going on.
Okay. Well, we'll provide that feedback. Thank you. That's all I had for today.
All right. We'll go to item number five.
Commissioners' comments.
Anyone have anything?
Nope.
Item number six.
Announcements.
I guess I'll combine item six and seven together. I want to say that we will be having a fiscal year 2021 public budget hearing for Celine County, Kipseur District, and Rural Fire Districts number one through seven. That will be next week's meeting at August the 11th at 9:00 AM in room 107. So if you have budget concerns and so forth, you need to come to next week's meeting because we will be having a public budget hearing. That will not be, will that be the final, where we okay the budget or disapprove it? Or was there another one after that?
We certainly anticipate that if there are no changes, you could approve it next Tuesday.
Okay. So there it is.
And probably the final announcement for today would be to encourage folks to go vote.
Yes, absolutely. Today is voting day and, you know, show your, your patriotism and be able to go out and express yourself with, with your vote. So thank you very much. That having been said, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post the same sign. We're adjourned.